Call the regular workshop of the School Board of St. Lucie County to order. Welcome to all of you with us tonight. This is a really special occasion where we get to honor volunteers with us tonight, and it's so nice to see so many of you in the audience. And welcome to our viewing audience as well. If you would, please stand with me as we have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country. My nation and my God. In this long and great history.
And now the Kids at Hope pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. Let me take this opportunity to remind you that if any here would like to be an unscheduled speaker tonight, there are forms in the back of the room that you can fill out and bring to Mrs. Harrison in the front of the room here, as long as she has them in her possession prior to the beginning of the consent agenda, please. Madam Superintendent, our special orders?
Yes ma'am. Special Orders of Business, and we're going to begin with the TARA mini grant presentation, so we'd like to ask Mrs. Colleen Peterson to come forward. And we won't spoil the surprise, we'll let you tell us what the TARA mini grant is all about.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Colleen Peterson. I'm a second grade teacher here in St. Lucie County at St. Lucie West K, but I'm here tonight as a board member of directors for TARA and also a member of their grant committee out of Tallahassee. TARA has been in educational technology for many, many years, and part of our mission is to support teachers in the use of technology in their classroom by providing grants, opportunities to give them money to purchase that technology. This year, we were very blessed with many, many applications. I read through many, many of them. I was lucky to find one here in St. Lucie County. We awarded $30,000 this year to 12 different teachers across the state of Florida, and we are very proud and pleased to have funded a grant for Mrs. Kimberly Durkey from St. Lucie West Centennial High School to purchase software to help her allied health students become proficient in the 21st century skills they need to go out into the workforce. So we are very proud and pleased to offer her $3,000 to fund that grant proposal.
mini grant award. She is a teacher at Centennial High School. Next is our Volunteer of the Year recognition, and we're pleased to have with us this evening Mrs. Leslie Young. She is volunteer coordinator at Manatee Academy and a member of the review committee. She will present our 2014 Volunteer of the Year winners.
My name is Leslie Young, and I am the volunteer coordinator for Manatee Academy K-8, and also I served on the Volunteer of the Year Committee. Good evening Chairman Hawley, School Board members, Superintendent Yost. It is my pleasure to present to you the winners of the St. Lucie Public Schools Outstanding Volunteer of the Year. We have three categories. Schools submitted nominees for the honor, and the dedication review committee, of which I was a member, using a stringent rubric, concurred on the three winners for each category. These three individuals will be recognized tonight with a plaque for their immeasurable gifts of their time and talents to the students and the teachers of our schools. All of the school nominees were celebrated at a reception earlier this evening in honor of February being the Volunteer Appreciation Month in Florida, sponsored by the St. Lucie County Education Foundation. Also, special thanks goes to the Fort Pierce-Westwood High School culinary arts students who prepared the snacks and drinks for us. Before we bring the three winners to receive their plaques, could we please have a round of applause for all of the thousands of adults and students who support our schools as volunteers? When I call your name, please come up to the podium and be welcomed by School Board members and the superintendent, receive your plaque, and then wait here for a group photo at the end. The outstanding youth volunteer is Ms. Callie Frizzle, representing Southern Oaks Middle School. Callie is an honor student at Fort Pierce Central High School, where she not only maintains a 4.0 grade point average, but also is active in girls' basketball and volleyball teams. Callie volunteers three days a week at Southern Oaks, where she attended middle school. She assists students with classwork, homework, and helps maintain the science lab after school. With her experience in varsity sports at Fort Pierce Central, Callie helps coach the Southern Oaks Middle School teams, providing encouragement, modeling team spirit, as well as teaching skills and conditioning. Callie also finds time to volunteer at Dogs and Cats Forever, as well as at her church. Please welcome Callie Frizzle, St. Lucie Public Schools 2014 Outstanding Youth Volunteer. On to the next category. The outstanding adult volunteer is Mr. Carl Andor, nominated by Mariposa Elementary School. Since arriving in St. Lucie County about three years ago, Mr. Andor has immersed himself in all levels of parent involvement at Mariposa Elementary. He's been involved in the PTO and the SAC Committee, but recognizing Mr. Andor's dedication to the school and no less his considerable construction skills, Principal Craig Logue of the school have benefited enormously from Mr. Andor's volunteer efforts. Mr. Andor has engineered many construction projects for the school, including but not limited to, it's quite a lengthy list, designed and built eight tables for the adult resource room, painted the room and made a wall of fame for photographs of the staff members, designed and built last year's school fair project, designed and built the full-size sleigh used for Santa's visits, designed and built the MLK parade float, painted and repaired the counselor's office, the secretary's office, and the entire cafeteria, designated or designed and built a new portable wall to be used in the cafeteria as an orchestra pit barrier, designed and built with some help the school's new outdoor stage, amphitheater, and deck with a grant from Lowe's that was used by the music teacher for student performances. Please welcome Mr. Carl Andor, St. Lucie Public Schools 2014 Outstanding Adult Volunteer One final category, this one is near and dear to my heart. The outstanding senior volunteer is Mr. Peter Papalazio, nominated by Northport K-8 School. For the last six years, Mr. Papalazio has volunteered weekly at the school, sharing his wealth of knowledge and experience. He is one of a handful of veterans who spearheaded the Purple Heart Memorial and Veterans Park in Port St. Lucie and is a founding member of the Veterans Partners of Education at Northport, which is very active and is a primary source to students of all information about the military and military protocol. He is the current commander of the Treasure Coast Korean War Veterans Association. Commander Papalazio helps plan the veterans' programming throughout the year at Northport. He also organizes and takes part in the special honor guard of local veterans who escort the schools graduating eighth graders into their graduation. He chaperones school dances along with the other veterans and is a fundamental part of the annual 9/11 tribute held at the school each year. He reads to young children, speaks with older children, and takes part in countless programs in the school's media center. Please welcome Mr. Peter Papalazio, St. Lucie Public Schools Outstanding 2014 Senior Volunteer
We have a final Special Order of Business this evening. It's under our special thanks and recognition, our star presentation. We'd like to ask Mrs. Michelle Jur to come forward and present our awards for the evening, please.
Good evening. I just have to say that I am so enjoying having, being able to participate in the STAR program. It's amazing the amount of people that want to recognize others for the work and the commitment that they have for our children. And so far, everyone who has been recognized has been recognized from someone outside of where they work. So tonight, we have two people that we would like to recognize, and I was so pleased to see this name come across my desk, and ecstatic that Ms. Yost chose this person to be nominated this evening. This lady has helped so many people. In student assignment, she actually helps us with getting children enrolled. She's helped us with homeless students. She's helped us with back-to-school events. But tonight, she's being recognized because of who she's helped at a school. A parent actually wrote in for this young lady and spoke about how tremendously helpful she was in helping her understand and navigate the process with registration at her school. Not only was she recognized by a parent, but one of our assistant superintendents felt it necessary to also share, and that was Dr. Kevin Perry. Tonight, we would like to recognize Lucy Reader, the registrar at Port St. Lucie High, for her outstanding concern with helping parents and children every single day. Lucy. Wait. Lucy. Lucy, we're also giving you this lanyard that shows that you are a star. Please wear it every single day so people can recognize you. Tonight, we would also like to recognize someone who really works behind the scenes 90% of the time. She is not often seen, but her work is always seen. Ms. Mimi Hoffman, the assistant principal at Fort Pierce Central High School, felt it extremely necessary to make sure that this lady was recognized for her STAR quality, specifically how she is so patient, how she can take an idea that she has and turn it into something tremendously wonderful and professional. This lady, Debbie McElly, is being awarded tonight for her vision to take a simple idea, make a terrific clip or video out of it, and make it better than she could even imagine. And here's your lanyard to show that you are a star. Please wear it all the time.
Madam Chair, that concludes our Special Orders of Business for this evening. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We will move now to our consent agenda. Board members, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mrs. Hensley. Second by Dr. Mills. All in favor, say aye, and vote aye as well. Motion carries five zero. Are all registered, Mrs. Harrison? Okay, thank you. Board members, at this time, are there any items coming before us for vote that you need to declare a conflict with? Hearing none, we will receive the recommendation from the superintendent.
I recommend the board approve a total of 13 consent agenda items, beginning with number 5.01 and ending with 11.01.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. Are there any items that you wish to have separate comment on? Any that you wish to pull for separate comment and discussion? Hearing none, we have received the recommendation for approval of the consent agenda items. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second. Moved by Dr. Mills. Second by Mrs. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We're still getting this electronic thing down pat, y'all. Bear with us. Okay, have we moved now to the superintendent's update?
I wanted to make sure that she had all the votes recorded. Thank you.
All recorded.
Under superintendent's update, we have two special reports this evening, beginning with an AVID presentation. So if Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant Superintendent, would come forward, please to introduce the team of presenters tonight.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Yost, it is indeed a pleasure for us to bring to your attention the AVID program. What is AVID? Advancement via Individual Determination. It started in 1980 in San Diego, California, at the academically rigorous Claremont High School by Mary Catherine Swanson. At the time, she was head of the English Department, and the district was implementing a court desegregation order. Sounds familiar. She noticed that there were some underrepresented students in the most challenging classes. She knew that the students could excel if they were given the proper supports. She also wanted to make sure that these students would survive in the academically acclaimed Claremont. Thus, AVID was created. AVID is an academic elective class, but it's more than a program, it's a philosophy. Hold students accountable for the highest standards, provide academic and social support, and they will rise to the challenge. Beginning with one high school and 32 students, AVID now impacts 700,000 students at more than 4,900 schools, 46 states, the District of Columbia, 16 countries. The AVID college readiness system spans elementary through higher education. When Swanson began the AVID program, she relied on 14 years of teaching experience that included remedial through advanced level courses and research to develop each aspect that was incorporated into the philosophy. Through research and collaboration with post-secondary faculty, she found the important skills needed for students to be successful at the post-secondary level. Cornell note-taking, the strong emphasis on academic reading and writing skills, and collaboration, all came from diligent research. Five years ago, we were contacted by the college boards about one of our high schools and an opportunity that they wanted to avail to us. The high school was Fort Pierce Central High School, and if it accepted the program, it needed to have a feeder. Well, we looked at Dan McCarty at that time, but Dan McCarty had a brand-new principal who was very interested in the program, but felt that it was not the right time to bring the philosophy on that campus. That led us to Sam Gaines. Site teams were organized, and teachers received training. There's also a district director who went through two years of intensive training. Each school currently operates with a site team made up of an administrator, AVID teacher, counselor, and other teachers. Westwood High School joined us this past summer and are in their first year of implementation. So joining us tonight to give you an update on the AVID program is Christian Register, who is the original AVID teacher at Sam Gaines Academy, Andrew Webster, who tutored in AVID as a college student and taught in the AVID program at Sam Gaines, Tracy Wilkie, the brand-new principal at Sam Gaines, who inherited the program and fell in love with every aspect of it, so much so that she wants to roll it down to elementary. Did I get that in, Ms. Wilkie?
Thanks.
Okay, great. Representing Ms. Baxter tonight from Fort Pierce-Westwood High School is Ms. Buchanan, who is the AVID counselor on that campus, and Ms. Nicole Smith, who is the AVID teacher at Westwood. And representing Mr. Smith, we have the fantastic AP, who's over ninth grade at Fort Pierce Central High School, who's been trained as well, Ms. Megan Guyer. Please welcome them to the podium.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Yost. Thanks for having us tonight. I think he's gonna get my technology going. I'm here to talk to you tonight on behalf of our team. I'm gonna start the presentation. This program is something that's near and dear to my heart. Like Dr. Perry was talking about, hopefully by the time we're done, you'll have a working knowledge of what AVID is and what AVID does for our students and our campuses, to learn a little bit about the strategies that we're using in our program, and understand how it goes from an elective class throughout all the content areas, and to understand the connection between our AVID program, the Common Core standards, and our quality framework for instruction, because it's all pretty much the same thing. AVID, like Dr. Perry said, stands for advancement via individual determination. And so, it is an academic class. We use writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading as our tools in the classroom and in the content areas. We call it WICER. So it stresses higher-level thinking. It teaches organization, note-taking, time management, and college and career planning. So these are not things, I mean, I'm sure you've heard of those things in other capacities. It's a system of strategies that's also used in content area classes to make learning more engaging. Our mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. So that's the AVID mission, but I think in general, you could say that is our mission as educators. Our students, this is who we target. It's students who have that academic potential that need a push and a little bit of support to take those higher-level classes. So it's the kids that are doing okay. They're sitting in the front row, maybe, they're sitting in the back. They're not doing as much as they could be doing, but they need a little bit of a push from someone, and then a little bit of extra support to be successful. They've got to have that desire and determination to do well in class. It's the over, it's the forgotten middle. We have programs for the already, you know, higher-level kids, and sometimes for the lower-performing, and this gets all the rest of the ones who sometimes are overlooked. It kind of, and also especially for first-time collegegoers. We have a recruitment process on our campus and also on the high school campuses. They have to apply to be in the program. They also have to have teacher recommendations and be interviewed, so it's kind of like their very first job interview. We recruit throughout the school year. I know Westwood and Central will talk a little bit about, we have a waiting list, and I think they have a waiting list as well, so we're always trying to recruit. They have to sign a contract, and this is the most important part, committing to their GPA. They can't have any grades that are lower than a 2.0 without an action plan. They have to set a good example on campus and be the kids that are doing what they're supposed to be doing wherever they are. And they have to maintain a binder for organization, which I wish I had one with me. They're pretty big and sturdy, but it keeps them on track. Here's what we do in the elective class. I'm the AVID elective teacher at our school, and so an example for us, Mondays and Wednesdays would be our curriculum, which could be anything from writing, college and career projects, and research, strategies for success in general. We do a lot of Cornell note-taking. We do a lot of, we have guest speakers that come and talk to us about career choices. We have college tutors that come at least once a week, ideally twice a week. We have the kids working in small question, higher-level thinking order, like groups. The tutors don't come and teach. They teach the kids how to think for themselves, how to find the answers that they're looking for, which is basically what happens to you when you get to college. You have to know where to go to find the answer, and so this kind of gets them on that track, and it's really powerful. Fridays, we do binder checks. That's my favorite day of the week. We make sure that they're organized, they've got their notes, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing with their calendars. Sometimes we'll do motivational activities or go on, we've been to college field trips. We always try to take, at our school, every grade level goes to a college every year. So like our sixth graders will go to IRSC, our seventh graders, last year we went to Florida Institute of Technology, and we took our eighth graders down to Boca. They tour the campus, they meet with the admissions counselors, so that's the kind of things that we try to incorporate. Here are some of the strategies that we use. In the writing, these are all strategies that we use in AVID, but they're also in CAGEN and other sorts of, you know, responding, doing peer editing, taking Cornell notes, that's huge. These aren't things that are necessarily invented by AVID. These are good teaching strategies. I know at our school, in almost every content area, they're required to take Cornell notes, and so I know when they get to high school, that's something that'll help them in college as well. Inquiry, we do Socratic seminars, which is a text-based conversation, and that's not only in the elective class, that's in content area only in the elective class, that's in content area classes as well, to teach them how to manage higher-level material that they might not be comfortable with. They do quick writes. We do those tutoring groups, which are inquiry-based, and do a whole bunch of different open-mindedness activities for them to be prepared for the real world. Collaboration, I think you can probably think of about a million different strategies. We use them all. We do use like Jigsaw activities, we do a lot of group projects. They do that tutorial group that I was saying, and then we're trying to set them up for real-world success. So you're not gonna work, you're not an island, I always tell them, you're not gonna be by yourself most of the time, so you need to learn how to play well with others. Organization, it's huge. I kind of, I think the reason I love this program so much, I could've used this myself at some point, you know? These are good strategies, and then teaching them how to record when their assignments are due, and pre-plan for big projects, then they're not up until 2:00 in the morning. I mean, these are skills that they need in general, and I'm not sure where else you learn those. You kind of pick them up in pieces along the way, but this program kind of packages it nicely and neatly, so you make sure no kid ever misses the day when you learned how to take notes, and nobody misses the day you learned how to plan for your history fair project. So we do a lot of goal-setting as well. I mean, short-term goals and checking in. Did you reach your goal? How are you going to make it happen if you didn't? You know, things, so that they can go back in track. We keep portfolios, so they can even look and see, the eighth graders I have this year have had for three years. So we look at their sixth-grade goals for like a little bit of a laugh, or, oh, principal's honor roll. Well, that's only happened once in sixth grade, so what happened? What are we gonna do before you go to high school? And then reading strategies, these probably all look familiar. KWL, reciprocal teaching, Think Alouds, where you talk through the text. Like I was saying, they're not specifically avid strategies, they're good teaching practices that they use. So in general, contributing to the success of our students, it teaches those study and organizational skills. It strengthens their writing skills. We write every day in our class, and then also the avid-trained teachers use those same strategies in their content areas. We give some tutorial support with the college tutors. It teaches them to work collaboratively to be successful in those difficult classes. We want them all to succeed in, you know, when you apply to college, and we start telling them as soon as, you know, sixth grade, the colleges wanna see those difficult classes on your transcripts. You know, you can skate through if you want to, but it'll be easier to be accepted where you wanna go if you're pushing yourself. And then we help them to explore those colleges and careers. Is it really likely that you're gonna go to Harvard? I hope so, but what do you have to do to get there? And then, a lot of the kids, with us especially, it helps them to teach, to take that ownership and the responsibility for their own education. Education doesn't just happen to you. You're in charge of what path it's gonna take, so how are you gonna be responsible for it? So this is kind of an overlap chart of the most important things that we have here in St. Lucie County, are, you know, the Common Standards, the Framework for Effective Instruction, and then our Avid. And so for all three of them, in general, it's good teaching practices. It's learning using inquiry. It's preparing them for success in their college career, and, you know, and also in their real career. It's working on collaboration, rigorous instruction, that's key, and then we're always giving them feedback and self-evaluation, and that goes for the students and then the teachers as well. We have a lot of professional development that we do for our staff, and also we go to Avid Professional Development in the summertime, which is pretty intensive and gets you kind of refreshed and ready. So, this is our Avid story. In 2009, we started, we had one Avid class at SGA, and then there was one class at Central. It moved on to, we still had one at SGA and two at Central the next year. Finally, we were able to have five in 2011 at SGA and three at Central. Last year, we had five at SGA and four at Central, and this year, we have actually three avid teachers at SGA. I teach five sections, and we have two other teachers that teach a section. There's five sections at Central, and then there's one at Westwood now, so it's pretty awesome. I'm not sure if I've mentioned it, but it creates a culture on campus that the kids can kind of buy into. They're avid kids. Our kids will tell you if you ask them that they're the honor students, and that's what they are. They're taking those higher-level classes, and they may not have started out the year as an honor student, but they'll tell you, I'm, oh, I'm in the smart classes. Of course you are. You're taking all the hardest classes, you're awesome, you know? So it's really, if you're an avid, you know what's expected of you, and you have a group of kids that you stick with. For us, like I was saying, I've had those kids since sixth grade, so they've been together and now three years, and they'll go to high school, and they'll be together, so they'll have familiar faces and people to lean on. It's nice. It's a community. So I'm going to have Mrs. Wilkie and Mr. Webster talk a little bit about our particular SGA Avid story.
Miss Register. My name's Andrew Webster, and I'm really glad to be here today to talk about Avid. I've been involved in Avid for eight years, and it's a program that's really important to me. I probably wouldn't be here in Port St. Lucie if it wasn't for Miss Register. Just giving you a shout-out, because, you know, for me, I'm from North Carolina, and my apologies to people that have heard this story several times, but I came from a district that has a very strong Avid program, Charlotte Mecklenburg, North Carolina, and I taught at a school that, when I got there, was really a mess. I was just thinking back to my first year at that school, and, you know, it was a dangerous place to be. The hallways were like a mosh pit, and our proficiency was in the twenties, and there was, we had, I think, an average of six referrals per student that year in the middle school. And so I was able to be a part of the school accepting Avid, and then we took on Avid as our entire school improvement model, so everything we did became avid. And over the few years, I watched us become an amazing school, and we ended with proficiencies in the eighties, the last year that I was there. I didn't want to move necessarily, my wife asked me if I would move to Florida with her, and so I did Google Avid Port St. Lucie, and Samuel Gaines came up, and we had one class, so I joined him four years ago, and in that time, I've watched it grow, and I'm really excited to see how many schools now have Avid, how many classes we have going. I remember we went and petitioned to our principal that second year and said, we've got one class now, we'd like Miss Register to be a full-time avid teacher. We ended up with, how many of that? Five classes that year, right? My role in Avid has been as a math teacher. I'm an algebra teacher, or have been an algebra teacher. This is my first year not in the classroom, I'm a math coach at Sam Gaines right now, but I've always been an avid algebra teacher, and I'm also an avid trainer of trainers for math teachers. Couple years ago, at Sam Gaines, the discussion at a lot of the math meetings was about kind of limiting the number of students that took algebra in the eighth grade, and especially in the seventh grade, a lot of people were kind of shy about it, and they were trying to cut back on the number of students that were taking that risk, and saying, well, they're not ready for algebra yet. But the Avid philosophy is exactly the opposite of that, and Avid believes that students should take algebra one in the eighth grade, and I've seen a lot of research since then that indicates that students who do take algebra early are more successful in advanced math in high school and are more successful in college. And I, and it's not just because we put advanced kids in algebra early. If you track kids who were lower-performing in the seventh grade, or that performed evenly in the seventh grade, you put them in algebra early, you can see that they always end up out achieving their counterparts. So we started putting as many students as we could in algebra from the Avid program. We went from having an algebra class to having two algebra classes. Every year since then, we've put as many kids as we could get in there. We've put several students in algebra that had twos in the seventh grade, but because they had Avid as an elective, they had a lot of extra support, and they've been successful. Last year, we had about 40 students in algebra, and we had 100% pass rate, but what's better than that is we had 90% of our students score fours and fives. And I'm, so I'm just showing over and over again the power of the program. I see it work for kids. I see it give kids a direction, and it gives them a purpose, and I see the relationship they build with their avid teachers, and that carries on and hopefully gets them into college. Thank you.
So when I was handed the baton and said, you're in charge of Gaines Academy now, my supervisor immediately shared with me, well, Tracy, you have the Avid program, and that means you need to go spend a week in Orlando. Okay. So I knew, really, it was a blank slate. So I put it on my calendar, and I went. It was a perfect opportunity, obviously, to meet and learn about my staff, but more importantly, really the first day I figured it out why I was there, the power of Avid. I instantly made connections, and I would see Dr. Perry in the evening or in the hallways and go, huh, I want this. We want this to grow. And I knew that really the first day, because the, what I saw was things that Kristin already really eloquently shared with you. It really, it hits all kids. We do focus on those kids who might fall away, and we might not recognize them because they don't bring attention to themselves, because they're not the high-achieving, and they're not the kids who are screaming out for help on the lower end. But it, immediately, I had the connections, and I had a thinking map all drawn out about how it was the Common Core, now the Florida Standards. It is PBS, it is Kids at Hope, it is the Quality Instructional Framework. It is everything that we, but it's all packaged really beautifully into Avid. And knowing that that's what you want to grow at your school. It was an intense training. It was really, I remember leaving there going, this was the best experience, one week out of my office, that I have really spent in my career. Truly, it was that good of a professional development. And the team that went with me, they had already been at Gaines, and they've seen it, but they were excited, and I've been able to watch all year how they implement everything that they've learned from their professional development. So the beliefs and the structures are there, and it really forms this community at your school. And when you walk into an Avid class, or you see Avid students, you see the leadership that is being developed. These students, their confidence, their competent, they are, their communication skills, they, and we talk to all students about, obviously, being ready for college and career, and their goal-setting, but they are very specific about that, and the experiences that the Avid program offers them in exploring the college and careers is really, is what will continue to lead them through high school and a successful graduation. Dr. Perry already stole my request, if you wanna call it that, that it really is my vision to continue. We expanded this year. We are up to the seven classes, and really, in order to continue to grow that, we would want to start looking into the elementary ages and learn more about, what does Avid look like at the elementary ages, and perhaps build that program so that we continue to expand Avid school-wide. This Friday, we are going to, a small group of us at our school are going to watch a webinar or participate in a webinar specific to the elementary program, and see how, in a K-8, it makes perfect sense to have that all-at-one school site, and then they continue on to their feeder high schools. So really, thank you so much for your interest in Avid. I want to also, if I could, just shout out to two teachers who came out, and this is where I, Robert Plowden and Kristin McCray, you might also recognize them from the Night of the Stars. And so they truly are stars, and they're here, they are Avid, part of the Avid program at our school, and thank you for your commitment for being here tonight and supporting us. We appreciate it. Miss Register, who do we go to next? Central?
My name is Megan Guyer. I'm the Assistant Principal over ninth grade at Fort Pierce Central High School, and I just wanna share a couple of words and piggyback off what the others have said before me. What Avid means to Fort Pierce Central are three words, especially for my ninth-grade students. I do have to focus on them, because I see their faces every day walking into the building too in every period, and especially on the first day of school. Avid gives us three things. Support. Ninth graders walk in our door, a huge high school, a class of 700 ninth-grade students, and they're immersed in a curriculum that's different than middle school. They're immersed in a group of students, a setting, an environment that's completely different. Our Avid program has given our ninth graders support. It's also created a culture, and as you can see this slide before, there's been a huge growth in numbers of Avid classes at Fort Pierce Central High School. The growth has stemmed from our partnership with the middle schools, our feeder schools, as well as the interest from our students. And lastly, excitement. The Avid program has brought excitement to ninth graders at Fort Pierce Central High School. The excitement for the group, for the class, for the Avid elective program is growing every day. As the registration process has started for ninth-grade students and eighth-grade students coming into Fort Pierce Central High School, we hear the word avid more and more. The questions on, how do I become an avid student? How do I get into that avid group? What about that avid class? Those questions are just coming more frequently. You can tell the avid group of students, you can tell the avid group of individuals that are walking around campus, and that excitement is just growing daily. The students that are participating right now in our Avid classes are growing, as you can see on the slide in front of you. We have over 75 students right now at Fort Pierce Central High School participating in our Avid classes. Our largest class is our Avid II class, and that stemmed from last year's ninth-grade class. That excitement, that just proves to you that it's growing at Fort Pierce Central, as well as in the district. We have 75 students right now and continuing to grow, our incoming eighth-grade class for this year. We have over 30 students wanting to register for our Avid courses, and wanting to know how they can become part of that Avid group. And that culture stemming from our middle school, and we can only thank you, because that excitement's growing. One of the important data facts on the screen that you can see is, last year, our class of nine Avid students, over 30% were enrolled in an AP class in their senior year, and this is something that's different, that has been growing as well. So the increase of rigorous courses and the importance of identifying that student and enrolling them into the academic rigorous courses as IB or AP courses, even our honor students are seeking out that Avid group, because it does provide them support. It provides them a group of students that are, that surrounds them with the encouragement, with the organizational skills, and the support needed to succeed in these classes.
I am ecstatic today to really talk about the Avid program, and first and foremost, I definitely wanted to thank Dr. Perry and Miss Register and everyone involved in getting Avid at Fort Pierce Westwood High School. I want to say, we have 27 students enrolled now in the ninth grade in our Avid program, and presently, our Pride Academy, which is our ninth-grade class, our philosophy is, every student is college-bound. So this definitely is the same of what we're trying to do with Avid. Get our kids exposed to college at an early age, get them sometimes out of the classroom, taking trips, and seeing what post-secondary education is all about. Our students are also enrolled in rigorous courses, as you can see, but I do believe one of the most important aspects that I've seen are, these students are taking responsibility for their learning. They are not sitting down and waiting to be told what to do. They're banging my door down, asking their counselor, listen, Ms. Buchanan, what can I do to be on honor roll? Because out of these 27 students, 23 of them after semester one are on honor roll, and they're taking that responsibility, and I'm so proud of them. Our avid teacher here, Ms. Smith, she invites me into her classroom every month, and our 27 students have already, they have an academic plan in place for the next four years. Also, of that 27, seven of them were involved in an ACT and SAT boot camp, which took place at IRSC, and they took the initiative. They found me and asked me about this, and they're in ninth grade. So that alone shows you what Avid is doing here on Westwood, in our county, at Westwood High School. Another thing about our Avid students, they're spreading the word. It's kind of like, you know... It's kind of like, you know, they're going out and they're talking about Avid and other students are excited about joining the Avid program. We have presently over 30 students on our waitlist in ninth grade to go on to 10th grade for Avid, and that's amazing. And as mentioned before by Ms. Register, those are the in-between kids and we really need to think about that. Those are the kids that don't really get the attention because they're getting by. So now we're definitely focusing on these kids and we're getting them to excel higher than they were before. And that's really important because we spend a lot of time with the kids on the other side of the spectrum. So it's a good way for us to really get all kids involved, all kids going to college, all kids talking about college. And as our principal said from Samuel Gaines, she wanted an elementary school, that would be awesome because they should be talking about college from kindergarten. So this program, it has done wonders for our school. When our kids wear their Avid shirts and we wear our Avid shirts, we're all excited. When we go on trips, they represent us well. And honestly, next year with about 30-something kids coming from Samuel Gaines, I am excited to say we'll probably have four or five sections of Avid. So I am definitely looking forward to that and I definitely welcome all those kids because they come in so eager. And I do foresee just great things happening with our Avid students as they're already doing right now. I'll introduce Ms. Smith, our Avid teacher.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Smith and I'm also a product of Westwood High School. Entering high school is very challenging for freshman students, but I have seen a tremendous amount of growth in them. They are up to the challenge and just as many others have said, the students who are not in Avid, they're always coming up to us and they're like, "Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith, how can I be an Avid student?" And because the Avid students, they wear their shirts with pride and it's just wonderful to see everything that has influenced them as far as what Avid has done for the students. Thank you.
We have a few pictures. These are some of the things that our kids have done on campus. The first picture is of our seventh graders last year at FIT. And I can't tell you, we had three or four people come up to us and say, "We have not had such a well-behaved group of students come through this campus." And I can't... we got compliments from like people all over the place. It was amazing. Another group were our ambassadors. We had some visitors from Liberia, so they toured them around campus and represented us well. One of the pictures is of our tutors we had a few years ago and them working in their collaborative groups. And I think it says it best when the kids say it themselves. So we have a little video. I knew technology. Me and technology sometimes, we're not friends. Hold on, let me see.
I started Avid in middle school. It is a four-year college preparatory class that prepares you for college and the future. I started Avid in middle school. It is a four-year college preparatory class that prepares you for college and the future. And right now, we're currently learning about goals to set for the future. That is one week till 10 years from now.
I've been in Avid until like eighth grade. And it was actually a great experience for me because it taught me how to prepare for college, doing a lot of tutoring. And also, we're doing it here at Fort Pierce Central as well. And it has been like a great experience for me, preparing me for my future and my destiny. And you know, trust me, if you come into Avid, please, you'll enjoy it.
I've been in Avid since sixth grade and it's been a great experience. I'm in the eighth grade now. It's taught me how to prepare for college and what steps I need to take to make it to college and it's been awesome.
For me, it has been good because it's telling me, like it's preparing me for the future and it's getting me focused. And I really like it. It keeps my grades up and I'm not slacking how I used to do back in elementary.
That's true because he was actually on Principal's Honor Roll this year finally. And yeah, I knew he could do it even since sixth grade, so. I think we've kind of said it already, but this seems to be a game changer on all of our campuses. It's something that really changes the culture and gets the kids focused in the right direction and taking responsibility for their own futures, making different choices than they might have otherwise, being in a positive peer group of kids who are focused on the same kinds of things that they are. So even if they get off track, I mean, it's funny to say, and I'm sure that other teachers can say the same, you know, they'll get on to each other before I even know about it and then try to get it straightened out. So it's nice. I have one more video. This one's from Avid Center and it kind of sums up the entire purpose of the program and it's really powerful, hopefully.
People like me.
People like me.
People like me don't go to college.
Nobody's ever going to convince me that I'm going to be somebody someday.
Street cred. It's more valuable to me than my education. My life will be defined by those who doubt me.
I know there are some out there looking up to me.
I'll let those AP and honor student be future leaders and policymakers.
Because me, I'm just one out of a long line of statistics.
Who knows? Maybe I'll even study.
But it won't affect how my life is going to turn out.
People tell me I can't succeed because they can't see past my skin color or how I talk.
They say I don't care enough to be a first-generation college student.
I am the last person in my family that's going to be successful.
I'm aware of the skills and talents I possess.
This is my destiny.
That was me before Avid helped me see my potential, believe in myself, to turn all of that around. And now?
This is my destiny.
I am aware of the skills and talents I possess to be successful.
I am the last person in my family that's ever going to be a first-generation college student.
I don't care enough, they say, because they can't see past my skin color or how I talk.
People tell me I can't succeed, but it won't affect how my life is going to turn out.
Who knows? Maybe I'll even study statistics.
Because me, I'm just one out of a long line of future leaders and policymakers.
I'll let those AP and honor students be looking up to me.
I know there are some out there, those who doubt me.
My life will be defined by my education.
It's more valuable to me than street cred.
I'm going to be somebody someday.
Nobody's ever going to convince me that people like me don't go to college.
If that's not Kids at Hope, I don't know what is. Thank you so much for listening to us. I think we really believe in what we're doing and we're making some really positive impacts on our students. And so we just wanted to make sure that you are aware of, you know, this amazing force that is Avid. Thank you so much.
I'm Chair School Board Members Superintendent Yost. That is our Avid program at our three sites. It's really neat because students were clamoring to go to Fort Pierce Central because there was not an Avid program at Fort Pierce Westwood. And with the students that left Sam Gaines at Central and at Westwood, there are full classes of those students rising up. We do have one school that wants to do some investigation for next year. And the neat thing about that is that school also feeds both of these schools as well. Avid is all about those, what we call the forgotten middle students. And those are the students that could be at risk, those students that could be getting in trouble for whatever reason. But because of the support academically and socially, those are the students that are now taking advanced classes, starting in their freshman year, really in eighth grade, and then rolling all the way out through their senior year. So thank you for your support and they'll be willing to entertain any questions. We will.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. I'd like to say to our employees representing Sam Gaines, Central, and to Westwood, you are certainly passionate about your Avid program and it shows. You mentioned your student pride, the student pride at each of your sites. We know that you are proud of each of your programs as well and we are fortunate to have you as members of our district. It's great to have the passion and the commitment to the students. So thank you for all you do. I'd also like to ask our board members, since it is a workshop this evening, do you have any questions of any of our presenters from this evening?
Can I just make some comments, Madam Chair? Woohoo! All I can tell is you've got a believer here. We just had a workshop before our board meeting and one of the things we talked about was student engagement and students having emotional problems, parent problems. I mean, students, we take all children and some children come to us not as well-prepared as other students. And Kristin Register, I knew some of this because of her engaging personality and she kept talking to me about Avid and I was like, "I really need to go visit and learn more." And I kept hearing little bits and pieces. But this embraces what our concept is in St. Lucie County. This is what we are. This is who we are. We're a Kids at Hope community. And then we have the academics. And seeing that Fort Pierce Central, 0% of the parents had college experience or... I mean, this is phenomenal. This is what St. Lucie County needs. I mean, I understand the magnet philosophy and the IB and all the different philosophies that we talk about, but this is a philosophy of best practices that embraces our Kids at Hope community, all of us. And I mean, I would love to see this expanded in every school. You've got my vote. Good job.
May I piggyback, Ms. Hilson? Dynamic staff members in the Avid program, but the teachers, even though Ms. Smith was soft and quiet, she is a graduate of the Westwood High School. I taught Ms. Smith. Did I get that in? Yes, I did. But the dynamic staff and what they bring to students every day in their classrooms, they have them eating out of their hands.
As we were just talking earlier, we were talking about the different personal development, PD, that we need to bring into the system for our educators and so forth. And we covered in our work session earlier, it's not just one program or the other, but it's having several different programs. And it came up that we talked about the PBIS and the Kids at Hope and the Ruby Pain, but we didn't mention Avid. And so I'm hearing about Avid tonight and I see the excitement. Really enjoyed your testimony, the man instructor, your testimony and where you come from and what you've experienced with Avid. And everything that's been said tonight just brought excitement to, I think, all of us as board members, seeing that we have a program out there that is working. And that is what you... that was the message you relayed to us tonight, that it's working. When we look at success rates and we have these different programs out there, we want to know if the program is really successful. You know, what is the success rate? And you brought that to us. You said the Avid program just came in in 2009?
Yes.
The year 2009. And already, we can see success in the program when I look at, when I hear about 2011, 2012, 98% of the students were successful in their algebra. And then I hear the following year, it went up to 100%. That's exciting. That tells us that we are reaching some of our students. And looking at that middle group, as been said tonight, you know, we're always trying to deal with the ones that's way under, you know, or we reward the ones that's way up, but we need to motivate those that have that potential, but they're just not motivated to use it. And what I think I've heard tonight is that the Avid program is motivating them. And I believe that's what it takes because a lot of our children, all children are capable of success. We say that all the time, Kids at Hope philosophy. But I think you said it when you said it's all, the Avid program has that philosophy in it. You know, it has the other philosophies that we have with our other programs. And so I'm excited about more professional development so that even with this Avid, that we can have more training possibly, you know, that we... that others can also at least be trained, even if we don't have it at the school. It may be something we want to look into because we're talking about more professional development for our teachers to support them in the classroom with our students. And we are in a different age and a different time and students are more aggressive and we need to have these things for behavior control and motivation. So thank you. Thank you very much for what you're doing and I'm looking to hear more success stories with that Avid program in the future. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. I need to make another comment.
No, go ahead. I want to follow up because I'm seeing a lot of principals out there today and I appreciate your attendance. And I want to thank you for your presentation. It was incredible and your enthusiasm and your administration supporting you. But sometimes when we bring these things up and it's board members as we praise them and we want to move these things to the district, you have to understand that this was the personality of some of the administrators, that some of these programs don't fit at all our schools. I saw that when we started off with Read 180. We had success at a couple of schools and then all of a sudden, all the principals started and said, "We need Read 180 throughout the whole district." And then the same thing with some other programs. So I applaud your success and very thankful for your success and thankful for your leadership. But it doesn't necessarily have to dictate that it goes throughout the whole district. So I just want... I want to say that because I've seen it happen a couple of times. We're very grateful for these ones and then they start wanting to put them in all our schools because they feel like it's something that they have to do.
And you know, Troy, as I mentioned earlier, it's different things that we do.
Exactly.
It's not all one thing. It's not all PBIS or it's not all of this or that. We need a variety of programs that address the different needs within the school system. So I think that was well said just now with you. It's important that we do have, but I really, I'm glad we have Avid.
Like Dr. Perry said, we have students wanting to go to Westwood because of Avid. So that's more like an attractor program for schools. So I want that to be a highlight because you start putting it in other schools and it doesn't have the same impact.
Right.
It has to have passionate people that are passionate about a program that make a program successful.
Your best practices. And so we can glean that information from Avid and perhaps share it elsewhere. So thank you again for your presentation. It was really exciting. And you can tell the board members are all very enthusiastic at this point as well. We have another presentation this evening. We'd like to ask Mrs. Carrie Patrick to come forward and provide us with a Florida Standards update. Carrie is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost. As we have heard, Superintendent Yost does provide us with regular updates regarding our navigation toward excellence in St. Lucie County. And tonight, I have very positive news to share as we continue to navigate in this direction. In St. Lucie County, our mission is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools with the knowledge, the skills, and the desire to succeed. This is accomplished through quality instruction designed to address the beacons of rigorous standards. And I'm so pleased to hail that we are staying the course. In this month's State Board of Education meeting, the board voted unanimously to approve the amendments to the state standards for mathematics and English language arts. This is a result of public input from this fall's public forums and from Commissioner Pam Stewart's January recommendation to the board to consider 13 clarifications for the English language arts standards and 24 clarifications and two deletions, as well as a pool of calculus standards for mathematics. This is positive news indeed as we continue moving forward with implementing our hardy English language arts and mathematics standards. The amendments were few in comparison to our overall bank of standards and were deemed appropriate to strengthen what we currently have. In English language arts, you will notice the addition of cursive writing and verbiage such as "with prompting" and "support." In mathematics, you'll see the addition of calculus standards as well as the inclusion of specifics for consistency such as yards and descriptions in mathematics. For an in-depth look at these adjustments, we invite the public to visit St. Lucie County's homepage announcement section or our Parents and Students page for links to the refinements and to what we now will reference as Florida standards. Additionally, as a way of pushing this information out for transparency, last week, we published a link in Skyward for parents and teachers, as well as publishing... a link in Skyward for parents and teachers, as well as published this information in an email communication to all users and have posted an article in this month's Curriculum Instruction and Assessment newsletters. Our partners at WLX TV will also be promoting this information for access to the standards and for the refinements.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Any questions from board members regarding the update from the DOE?
Yes. Is it the progression of student standards? It's not the brochure.
No, sir. It is on the webpage if you go to the announcements box. Okay. And there are four different links. Two show the refinements and it will show you, it will take you to a link where you will see highlighted standards with green, yellow, and red. The other is the Florida standards for language arts and the Florida standards for mathematics.
We will make certain that that is clear. I see that Mr. Ingersoll is, is live with his access and so, we, we need to make sure that we have the, the correct links. And so, we'll double check that.
And Mr. Ingersoll, if you click in your newsletter that you also received this evening, those live links, you don't have to cut and paste. They're right there.
So, thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Appreciate that. As we move forward, I also wanted to thank our Education Foundation for a fabulous evening at the Night of the Stars on Saturday evening. Absolutely. It is something to applaud. And we recognize two of the Avid teachers and one of them was selected as our Outstanding First Year Teacher of the Year and that was Mr. Plowden that was recognized a moment ago from Sam Gaines Academy. We also had our Teacher of the Year, our School Related Employee of the Year, Minority Educator of the Year, as well as our Administrators of the Year, our Principal and our Assistant Principal of the Year. So, thank you again, Mr. McKenzie. I see you in the audience. Education Foundation offers an opportunity for us to eloquently honor our educators and we thank you for that. I've received a certificate from the Florida, from Florida Health indicating that we are Florida Fit Friendly Company. So, we've received the Florida Fit Friendly Company Award because our worksite wellness programs are an effective way to educate and encourage individuals to make meaningful choices toward a higher, a healthier lifestyle. So, we'll have a certificate that we will proudly display indicating that we are indeed a worksite of recognition of excellence in wellness. So, kudos to all of our employees who move forward in that area. And then finally, I'd like to comment on the Consent Agenda item. It was 11.01. It was a memorandum of understanding with the St. Lucie County Health Department for flu vaccines. And we are going to be partnering with our Health Department to make certain that our students in the coming year have an opportunity to be vaccinated with the flu vaccine for free or connected to their health insurance. It will also be available for our employees at each worksite so it will be very convenient for our employees as well as our students to become healthier when we all have our flu vaccines and I'm sure all of you had yours this year. So, that we stayed healthy, we will be a healthier community. Students will be in school, their attendance rate should soar and there are many, many benefits to that. So, we applaud Mr. Larry Lee Jr. for his foresight in bringing this to St. Lucie County schools. The partnership should be the first of many years of, of a wonderful partnership. And I believe we have a representative in the audience from the Health Department. Thank you so much for partnering with us in this initiative. We appreciate it. So, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We will now move to board member reports and Ms. Hilsen will begin with you tonight.
Just to piggyback on what the Superintendent said about our wellness, I've attended our wellness meetings and our SHAC meetings and everyone's in good hands with our committees. They're working diligently to find alternatives to assist people to stop smoking if they have not already stopped smoking and also working on more classes if you're not involved in any of the Zumba or yoga or just, there's just so many choices and I have to give Carly Fabricant a gold star for her hard work. At our last wellness meeting, we actually had a pediatrician who attended from the Health Department and said that he would weigh in as we move forward in looking at the morbid obesity and the type 2 diabetes. He has agreed to come and be a champion for us, so I'm encouraged by that. Just, I have to say one more time about Port St. Lucie High School and that maim, I just can't get over Patrick Madden and how wonderful the team at Port St. Lucie is. I mean, the, the way that came together was just like, I know we've talked about it, but it's just amazing to me and I just want to thank again Port St. Lucie High and Patrick and all the people that went together to do that musical.
And you notice we, on our Consent Agenda tonight, approved Cinderella for the summer musical, so everybody stay tuned for that. Dr. Mills?
I have a few announcements this evening. Couple of events that we're having out in the community. In fact, one is tomorrow. And so, it's a good thing that we had, were able to have a, a board meeting and get this announcement out into our community. One of our very own schools, West Gate, K through 8th, has partnered with the Vanduza Foundation and the Fort Pierce Police Department, as well as the St. Lucie County Sheriff Department and others to raise money funds for two of our very own students here in St. Lucie County who are fighting cancer. Both of these students are currently undergoing chemotherapy and treatment for the disease and we're asking the public to come out, especially those of us within our school system, but all of the public to come out and just share a slice of pizza or a hug or some hope for these two little brave children that will, I'm sure, be at the event. 100% of all the sales, the tips, and even the staff salary will benefit these two students. As I said before, they're both students of West Gate and of course, we know that they're part of our district and we love them very much and we want to support them. The event will be held at Big Apple's Pizza, that's tomorrow, and that restaurant is located right across the street from IRSC in Fort Pierce on 35th Street, right off of Virginia Avenue. So, it's tomorrow, as I mentioned before, and the hours are between 4:00 and 10:00 PM. So, come on in and get a slice of pizza. All of the sales will go toward helping our two children who are fighting the disease of cancer. And we mentioned the Maine and we mentioned Cinderella and now I'm going to mention the Little Shop of Horrors that Fort Pierce Central High School Performing Arts Department will be presenting the Broadway musical play and it's entitled The Little House of Horrors. The performance will be held at Fort Pierce Central High School Auditorium, which is located on 25th Street. And this play is a full-length, grand-scale Broadway musical production. So, what a wonderful way to be able to go out with our family or our children and so forth and enjoy a night right here in Fort Pierce, a Broadway play. I'm excited about our, our arts department and the drama, especially in what we, what we're, our children and instructors are doing. This particular play is about a flesh-eating plant. It's got doo-wop music and pop music and a fella named Seymour who gets more than he bargains for, okay?
It's a date.
Showtime. Showtime's on March the 7th, which is on a Friday and at 7:00 PM. And then they have two shows on March the 8th, which is on the next, the Saturday, 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. You can get your tickets at the Fort Pierce Central High School Box Office, okay? That's that, you can go right to Fort Pierce and get those tickets. The tickets for Delta are 10 and for children are 5. One more event that I wanted to mention tonight and that is our St. Lucie County Reading Council. We are inviting the community to their, our fifth annual Free Family Reading Festival that will be held on Saturday, April 12th from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And I've gone the last couple of, couple of years, it's at the Mets Stadium in St. Lucie West and I mean, the books that you can buy for the prices is just unbelievable. I think it's a one, one, once-in-a-lifetime-type price for books and you could just get bags and bags of books for your children. So, this should be a great event and we have thousands of people that do come out for this event. The first 400 families through the gate will get a free goodie bag with a book and the first 300 children will get a free Mets game pass. So, we want you to keep that on your calendar as well for the month of April.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
Ms. Patrick, do you have a few moments to come back up forward real quick? I appreciate it. I just need clarification. This is definitely a hot topic and as I'm looking at it, I just want to make sure I'm seeing, when I talk to people about this, I just need to make sure that I'm, I'm correct. I'm looking at the math standard.
You're looking at math standards for the Florida standards at this time?
For the Florida, for the Florida standards at this time. And the, are you board members there? Oh, you don't care, okay, that's fine. Not that you don't care, I just, the amended ones, is that amended from Common Core or is that amended from last year's Florida standard?
That is amended from our Common Core standards. In the fall, the governor asked for public input, anything that the public, our parents, our students, our teachers, our community members felt that they could bring to strengthen the standards, the Common Core standards. And there were 19,000 comments that were recorded. There was a team of experts in English language arts and mathematics that vetted through every single comment that came forth. The comments that were deemed academically feasible were brought toward the commission as far as a review. From that, the recommendations to amend the standards was made by Commissioner Pam Stewart. So, those were indeed from the Common Core standards as we in Florida have now refined them and strengthened them with our public input. The term now is Florida standards.
So, the new standard then came from the same group of people?
From our rigorous Common Core standards that we have implemented this year in 3 through 12 as blended, that we have in place in kindergarten and in first and second grade. Full, full Common Core in those grades.
Okay. We'll discuss that later. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate that. Just so grateful for the Night of the Stars. Mr. McKenzie and Education Foundation did a phenomenal job. I think it's one of our better ones and I appreciate it. It was a, it was a great night. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Ms. Hinsley?
Yes, ma'am. This morning, the Health Access Network, which is our free clinic and its network, had our annual meeting and, and this is the third year that it's been open. We started with about $2 million with volunteer equivalent hours. This past year, we had little excess of $8.5 million of donated time and services in our community. That shows a great commitment of our community to the health and well-being of our working poor. For those that don't know, the, the hands actually has mental health component, physical health, dental health, ophthalmological health. So, it is quite an undertaking that our community has stepped up and provided that much service in such a short period of time. Children's Services Council, the state organization, will be meeting in Tallahassee next week. We have some panels invited and they have accepted. So, the, the, so, meeting people one-on-one, we anticipate panels of, of secretaries and department heads to have discussion at a deeper level than maybe we've been able to accomplish in years past. And our five-county school board work group met this morning, looking at some of the same issues, issues dealing with education and children that we will be talking about in the near future when session starts next week in Tallahassee. So, if there's anything that people are really concerned about, I would encourage you to make sure that you watch closely with what's going to happen, the bills that are filed and the issues that are going, could directly impact the students, faculty, staff, and indeed citizens of St. Lucie County.
Thank you, Ms. Hinsley. Dr. Mills, did you have another comment?
Yes, I just wanted to remind the parents that they can go on our school site and if you click on Parents and Students, as Mr. Ingersoll was going over the standards tonight and asking questions, just want to remind the parents that you can go right on our school site and you'll see the Florida standards, parent brochure. You'll also see the book Progressive Florida Standards and you'll see the Florida standards as well. So, it's all there, right there for you on our school site and I just wanted to remind the public of that.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. I have a few comments. First and foremost, this is the time of year when so, so many events happen, both for our students and for our teachers and adults. And Mr. McKenzie, again, to add my accolades to all that have been extended tonight, it's, it's just such a wonderful opportunity to honor all the shining stars in our school community and we're so grateful for the Education Foundation for hosting that event. And please convey to Ms. Stone, she did a fabulous job and to all who participated, it was, it really was a night of the stars and it was an honor to be there. Other activities that have been happening, our Project Citizen Showcase was showcased on February the 15th and I want to thank Mr. Norfleet and all those involved in that and all of our students. That was really, has become quite an event to, to go and see all of the projects and the engagement level of our students is, really gives me great, great hope for the future. This Saturday, the History Fair is coming up and will be held at Palm Point from 9:00 until noon and a lot of our students have exhibits that will be shown there, so I encourage you to stop by and see. All the schools are showcased there and I, please, if you have an opportunity, stop by and, and take part in that. And once again, we had a wonderfully successful STEM Fair. To all who had parts in that, thank you. The students had some really phenomenal exhibits and projects once again. Every year I go and every year I learn things, so it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to, to have students teach us and, and that really is an engaging and fun time. So, we had several that will go on to the next level now and we wish them all great support as they move on representing St. Lucie County with their individual projects. Next week, we'll be celebrating the birthday of Dr. Seuss and have received many, many invitations to read at schools and looking forward to being there and, and that opportunity to be with you all in that. And also a reminder that this Friday, the St. Lucie County Fair opens and many of our students will be participating at the fair on various levels, whether it be FFA or 4H. All of the schools have an opportunity to set up an exhibit in the school showcase room. So, please go vote. There's monetary rewards attached to that for the schools that get votes, thanks to our Kiwanis Club. So, please, don't forget when you're at the fair, it's not all about the midway. Go and visit the students and they have different animals that they're showcasing, different exhibits, so I encourage you to take part in that as well. And just as a total aside note, Sunday night at the fair at 5:00, Mrs. Yost and I are two of six women who somehow were chosen to possibly kiss a pig. Well, it's all for good. It's all about Kids at Hope. Every single dollar raised through that activity goes to help the Kids at Hope initiative here in St. Lucie County schools. So, we graciously accepted that invitation and we are working diligently together to assure that perhaps some other unlucky person gets to kiss the pig.
But we, the... But it is a good cause, so the funds are going to the proper place.
It is a wonderful cause, indeed. So, if you need some, I don't even know what kind of entertainment to call it Sunday night, but if you're at the fair at 5:00, come to the, come to the, where the, the swine show is being held and, and we'll see what happens. Two items for board member consideration, the first being, and I realize we're being very proactive on this, but our calendars get so scheduled and booked, I wanted to bring these dates to your attention now. We are scheduled for a board meeting on March the 25th. That happens to fall during the week of spring break. I am asking for your consideration tonight to cancel that particular board meeting as most of our staff has, is scheduled for vacation time or various things as well, attending conferences and that sort of thing. So, is it the pleasure of this board that we cancel that particular board meeting that is being March 25th?
Yes.
Okay? So, the March 25th board meeting is canceled. We will have one board meeting in March. My, my one regret with that is, and I realize we'll make it up later, but I want to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Yost and her staff for, on the fourth Tuesday board meeting days, we have been meeting in the afternoon from 2:30 to 4:30 in a work session. And I just want to commend you for the quality of the information that you're providing to us and I... to us. And I realize it was things that we asked for, but you're really bringing us, it's, it's been a really good learning experience for all of us. So thank you to that.
More than welcome.
And for your staff, yes.
We look forward to that monthly as well. Perhaps we could schedule another Tuesday afternoon so that we don't miss one in the month of March.
That's a thought. But it, it has been, I think, I know, very informative to, to each of us, so thank you for that. The next two dates that I need to bring to your attention happen in the month of July. And as you know, in the month of July, we always have to conform our dates around the TRIM requirements having to do with our budget. So I have spoken with Mr. Bargeron after we received all the information from the tax collector's office and it appears for us to be within the confines of their timeline. We would need to have a meeting on July the 22nd and July the 29th, which is deviating from our second and fourth. I think in fact, that will be the fourth and fifth Wednesday, Tuesday night of that month. So are there any objections to changing those two dates in July so that we would meet on Tuesday, July 22nd and then again Tuesday, July 29th? Objections? I, I realize, I realize it's off in the future, but just in, in an effort for you as you make plans for the summer.
And the 22nd, I'm out of town. But that's fine.
That, that one is one of our regular scheduled ones that we would just be moving, but, okay. All right. It appears we will move forward with meeting on the 22nd and 29th so that we are within the requirements of the TRIM notifications and such as that. Okay, I have no other business.
Yeah, I had a final announcement. Thank you so much. I've just been reminded that we have our open houses for the incoming ninth graders tomorrow evening at each of our high schools, beginning at 6:00 PM. So I hope that many of our families coming into ninth grade will take advantage of the open house, beginning at 6:00 PM at their assigned high school. So thank you.
Good reminder. Okay, there being no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.